That's the piece to take.
That's why I looked at you that way.
That was me, but I made that for her.
Run with you.
Billson, we get started. Public hearing increased.
Go ahead. Brandon Johnson, fourteen fifty Mill Road, Moscow, Idaho. I'm the general manager of the number place. I didn't come with a big speech or to come to hear you guys anything. We're mostly just heartbroken about the loss, the opportunity to serve you guys. We do have other services in the area, we're not going away. So anxious to continue serving in that capacity. But mostly this came down to let me know that my team is extremely eager to do what it takes to earn this business back. So we're gonna be around talking to people, performing the services we're allowed to, and anxious to improve, so. Also, I've been a part of this community for twenty-nine of the thirty-three years I've been alive, and I hope that if there's any problems with our business, people would just feel comfortable to reach out to me directly, instead of like the way we did. Good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to accept the minutes from August eighth, twenty twenty-three.
We have a second.
I'll start.
I have a question about agro.
That would be Clifford.
What was it?
I bought a monitor for the front of the water tender.
Worth forty, yours too?
Plumbing, 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 oh man, the plumbing is so expensive. Two inch.
Anybody else have questions about bills? I move to approve the bills from August.
I'll start there.
So if you just want to try and see if you can get off the bit, or if you want to just haul it away, have someone bid on it, the truck.
The council want to consider.
Whatever you guys want to do.
Well, we have to get rid of that junk down at the sewer plant. There's just too much of it, and when the people come to to start to work on it, there isn't gonna be any way for them to work with all the junk down there. And that pipe, that plastic pipe is no good. So Robbie was telling me that we could throw that in the dumpster next, first of next month.
Yeah, he said they would take it if we cut it up and hauled it in on a Saturday. That they would take the pipe that we did. That's something to consider if we can do that.
Yeah, we can get rid of that, and but there's not much of it. They need to get rid of, so when they come in, they'll have room to set their all the equipment, if we don't clean it up.
Well, the part of the new plant is going where the pile is, so.
Yeah.
The metal pile is mostly fates from the highway that kept getting hit and then Josh now cut out, cut out the fence and then piled up there. There's some well casing from home of the five, which is all metal. There's the old swing set from the park, there's some old pumps that cracked and froze or burned out. There's some old metal pumps in there. That's most of the metal pile.
That needs to be all of the junk guy.
There's a separate pile of meters, and apparently the brass is fairly valuable, but you have to strip the meter completely down. You have to take the dials out, the rubber, everything, so there's that. The sanders, those other sanders, Frank was using for parts for our sander. I told Bonnie when the day I wanted to keep our old sander, because we have that connection made and it fits our dump truck. Just in a pinch, we could still use it, but the other sanders, I don't know. And the plow, the plow fits the other truck. Frank loves that plow with a passion, and it's his baby. It's heavy, it's industrial, but it doesn't fit anything that we have, and I, you know, I don't know what to do with it.
Pick up, take it to his front yard.
I put it in front of his yard.
That's a great idea.
And then, oh, the fire hydrants. I talked to the fire department about the fire hydrants, even if we wanted to. We were using it for parts, but they've sat out in the weather for so long, even the rubber gaskets and stuff wouldn't even be good anymore. And when we're lately, we've just been putting in a new hydrant. They're to the point where they're up to the ages, and it's just better to put in a new hydrant. Yes, please.
So I just need to interject. So we have this list that you made today of all the surplus things. I double-checked with AIC to see exactly how we got rid of that. We've done some surplus stuff before, but I just wanted to make sure. So basically, what we need to do, I think, is to go through this list, and if there's more, you know, we can make another list. But we need to identify each thing in a resolution, and then council will identify how council wants to get rid of it, whether it's to trash it, or to scrap it, like all of that metal, or to sell it, like we would do the dump truck, or to donate to a charity or whatnot. It just all needs to be listed out in the resolution and passed, obviously, in a council meeting before we can start getting rid of things. And also, he mentioned that the law for the city elected officials and staff responsible for overseeing the surplus process from purchasing or receiving surplus items.
Who wanted to buy me a fire hydrant for my dog? Kidding.
I don't really want to get rid of the rocks necessarily. We could, we could move them. Because we could use them in another project in town. If we use some down on the corner, you know, by Granny's pantry, so maybe those might be the only thing I would say, maybe instead of just getting rid of them.
Yeah, maybe hack up someplace out of the way. This kind of dunked in there.
So maybe I guess we take that off the list. Sorry, hi. The lights, I was told. There's two piles of lights, the big square lights. I thought Mike Boyer had said that they could replace the light bulbs in them with LED bulbs, but now I'm not, I don't really know that to be true, so.
Yeah, that's what, with the same thing they told me, but.
So I don't, I just don't know. I don't know enough about them, or, but they take up a lot of space.
Yeah, they take up all the space and nothing, they won't.
I don't know if they have any actual recycle value or salvage value, or I don't know.
So do we want to go through the list and make any determinations today on what we can at least maybe get started with? I don't think that there's a limit of time or a limit of how many of these we can do.
I feel like as far as the lights go, you should check with the baseball association and see if there are any of those would be value added to that.
Yeah, okay.
I'd need to find a place for them, if they want to keep them.
I think we loaded them, two sets of those with tobacco. I think they lifted the bars up, so we could probably move them somewhere if they wanted to move.
Because they're, they're because the time they start moving pipes and things in and all their equipment that they gotta use, that York's gonna be poor, that it needs to be cleaned out before they get started.
So what do we need to do for this?
So I was just thinking you could go down the list.
Okay, why don't you start?
So the water style hydrants. Are they, would they be scrap, would they be trash, would they be, what would they be?
For junk? I would say list them, because somebody might want them for decoration.
The two banks of stadium field lights.
I'll check with the.
Baseball association.
The sweepster mini sweeper with no motor.
Is there any scrap value on it?
I don't even know if there's any scrap value.
Is it, what is it?
It's a mini one, I mean it.
Or Pacific, they might want it for, I don't know, scrap prices are, we might be able to get twenty, thirty bucks or something of ours.
So scrap? The old sickle mower for a tractor?
Get rid of that thing. Nobody's gonna get killed on it.
It is dangerous, and it's in bad shape.
Is it trash?
Yeah.
Is it scrap?
Well, give him twenty bucks for it.
You want to give us twenty bucks? So you could surplus it and have people build it.
They'll still give me the twenty bucks.
Get over here.
Okay, the sickle mower for auction. The metal scrap pile, that would be scrap. The pipe pile is, that's the plastic pipes, so that would be trash. And the other stadium lights would be the baseball association. The old well house.
Yeah, it's a cute little living house. It's only.
What do these are?
Oh, that's cute.
Somebody's dog house.
Decoration.
We could auction it, and if it doesn't go, then we're free to do it.
Someone will probably want it just for a doghouse.
Yeah, a doghouse.
Meters, the old meters.
The only way you can get rid of them is to.
Scrap them?
Scrap them. Nobody, they're good for nothing.
Yeah, you don't get much money out of them if you don't clean them up and they're not worth cleaning up. It's not worth tearing them apart.
So would they be trash then?
You can, you can still get scrap out of them, but they won't give you a hole on it. Not what you really want.
It's great brass.
Right, yeah, clean, clean brass.
It's like a nineteen seventies, just, the windows are broken out, it's got a round stripe, the white stripe, and it's just one of those like aluminum fricking things.
Really, that's trash.
I think it's, I think it's trash, yeah.
It's trash.
I think they.
Because it's aluminum, it's not scrap, it's not trash.
I think Frank used it as a roof, just to cover something, or they had it over the top of something.
Yeah, it was scrap, it was aluminum.
The pickup tool boxes.
There's crap too.
Could you plant flowers in that?
Do you want them for flowers?
But you don't have a bed, but yeah, that might work. I can't have you doing that on television.
Only for three more months.
Only for three more months. Somebody might want them, I think we should auction them.
The camera or the pickup boxes?
Yes.
Did you see the picture?
Yes.
They're white, okay, yeah, someone may want them.
The old flower blade.
I would auction for surplus.
Yeah, it's gonna have to go, I think, it's so handy and big.
And the two sanders.
I guess.
I was, I was trying to auction.
Yeah, let's try to auction them.
Well, it's wrinkled and.
Somebody might have an old sander, like redo the surplus for parts.
There's states, so someone might still be using it. Okay, wow, wow, that was productive. That's awesome. I just don't want you doing this and, you know, like moving stuff, it's frozen.
I'll make the resolution, and you'll have to pass the resolution.
Can they move on, or? Raises for the the four employees. I suggest that Justin gets a five dollar an hour raise, and the two ladies get four dollars. And Ryan, just to be good, he's just here, but he still needs a dollar raise. And that there, he just they're still way behind any other people being in their towns for a while.
So if we reviewed that, if we looked into it, if we called other towns and found out that.
Did you get a hard thing?
They don't, when they get thirty dollars an hour, thirty some dollars an hour, just gets twenty, well, that isn't a very good, that's not a very good deal. He can go down to Allen and just state and get his job. It was the same with Lindy and Barney. You gotta pay them, or they won't stay. It's just a fact. What do you want to do?
I think we need to give them a raise.
Raise.
Do we check this every year, every so often, give them a raise, or what do we do to get, kind of get up with that?
We give them a fifty cent raise. That's what we've been doing before, but and the thing is now, and they're so far, our our employees are so far behind any other cities. We gotta raise their wages, or they can go down the road and.
Some of them are right in that area, some of them are a little high, and some of them are where they're at. So I get what you're saying, totally get what you're saying.
If you.
But we gotta find a balance.
And you try to, and you try to find someone that can do what these four people can do, you better think again, because you can't find them.
Honey, if we, if we do, if we okay this, and then I get next year, then we should at least give her another dollar or whatever. Keep going, keep going.
Keep them going, you gotta keep, you gotta keep up with the other cities or.
Well, inflation is, is high, and when you actually add up the amount of hours of the that Bonnie and Wendy work, it's really not that much that we're actually adding up. To Justin, which I believe Justin does deserve it, because he's the supervisor now, you know what I mean? But, I mean, you can go to McDonald's and make, make this.
Yeah, yeah, you can, yeah.
There isn't a McDonald's in Juilliard. So, you know, we've been told by various organizations about Justin's position, putting him personally aside, that his position is probably underpaid, and probably significantly underpaid.
By far, underpaid by far.
And I think that there's, we should not conjoin everyone necessarily, and we should look at where the biggest need is and start there. Because, I mean, we are comparable to some of those towns, but we're not comparable to all of them. I would say probably, I don't know why I'm thinking this, but Troy's probably in that range, and it looks like Justin, you know, Troy, it looks like it pays pretty decent.
Troy's the highest.
Highest one.
In Las.
Las Vegas.
Yeah, but Las Vegas.
But they're also, I mean, I understand Las Vegas probably, they're a little bigger, bigger town than we are.
Well, yeah, they're, they're about twelve hundred people.
And, you know.
Can I interject your perspective? I did, in this, I like to put in the cost of living percentage for just this year, and we are under, just even at the cost of living, or the co-op, cost of living adjustment. Like when we gave the city council a raise to one thirty, that would put you up to the cost of living. Wendy is a dollar eighty-nine under, Justin is two, two dollars and ten cents under approximately. I'm a dollar eighty, and Ryan is a dollar ninety-four, under the cost of living. Just so you know, and I can pass it down if you want to look at it, but I highlighted the fact that, you know, like the city council getting after, since two thousand and four, you know, so you guys are at that point where you hit the cost of living increase, so the computer does the work for me, so all I have to do is put in that percentage, and.
Well, I voted against a raise for myself. I think that's more in line with, with what we probably realistically looking at, is in the cost of living range. I don't think it's unreasonable to raise in that manner. Again, the main supervisor position, we've been told in our Kendrick meetings that he, that that position is significantly underpaid, so we might look a little closer to that. But we're a poor community. Our, our, the whole community wages as a whole that pays our bills are not necessarily going up at that rate, so.
A lot of people move out here because it's cheaper, they like living in Lewiston, but they're getting paid better in Lewiston.
True.
You know, so they have to drive and stuff, so.
Yeah, they live cheaper in Juilliard than they do in any other town.
So my question is, so say that we decide, no, let this sort this out here, and then we lose, say Wendy and Bonnie to somewhere, then we're gonna have to find somewhere else.
And we have to pay more.
We're gonna have to pay more to get somebody to start, and we're losing all of their years of experience.
I do think that they need a raise, absolutely.
I don't think anyone's suggesting no.
It's just the wear.
It's about being affordable.
Can I interject again?
Sure.
Wendy, Wendy has been here ten years, I've been here five, half the time. I don't feel like I deserve the four dollar an hour raise, I'm willing to go lower just to get myself up to the cost of living, like two, two fifty, because I think that's more fair, why should I get the four when I've only been here five years and she's been here ten? So, and I started at a higher rate than she did, so.
She started ten years ago, and Dorothy wages then was way down, and now, now the inflation is very high, and so I, everybody needs to raise.
I would like to see it go in steps, like especially like for Justin, once he gets to a certain spot, that once he gets another license, and he gets a hundred dollar, you know, whatever was at that dollar amount at, for every license and certification that he gets, would that be something that would be fair to you, or, you know, what are your thoughts?
It already is fifty cents wise, or, yeah, fifty cents.
Well, that's not that much to me, but we did, I mean, to me, you put in where you work for.
I've got four licenses already, so.
Oh, you do? Nice, good job.
I got another two, about one fifty dollar. Kenneth makes thirty-one dollars an hour, and has no sewer treatment plant and no water plant.
Yeah. Well, what's I'm saying is I'd like to see you buck now, and then get more for each license that you get. I didn't realize it's only fifty cents.
Yeah, that's the way it should be.
So what are we thinking, we need to go? I mean, what he said, what do you guys think?
Ten dollars.
I think it's steep, honestly. I mean, again, I separate the main supervisor position, I don't think that's an unreasonable raise, especially considering, you know, that would be a very difficult position to fill. I think everyone, you know, Wendy, the city clerk, has done a lot of training, she's done a lot of traveling, she's, you know. It's, but, you know, I manage a bar, my bartenders make dirt, you know, so I'm my, I, no offense, I can't have any more sympathy than I do for them. It's tough living in a small town, and working in a small town, I don't want to see a turnover, and if, you know, but at the same time, we, we're a poor town, and our sewer rates, by the way, went extra, astronomically higher, that's not how you pronounce that, but astronomically higher, like.
Our town is not poor.
It is poor.
It is not poor.
You can yell at me all you want, our town is poor, our wages are low here.
Well, maybe.
You're not poor.
I'm poor. I'm just sorry.
You're not poor. I'm poor.
Okay, so what are we thinking of this is gonna do? We're just gonna have.
Let's start with treasurer, do you want to go up, a dollar, two dollars, three dollars, four dollars?
I think.
Well, we're talking to council right now, hold on.
I think, in my opinion, my one vote is I think we should look at the cost of living.
And that's what she gave us, and so what Bonnie gave us was almost two dollars for treasurer, correct? And that's what she's proposing, so go two fifty? You wanna go two dollars and make it even?
I'd go two dollars.
What do you feel?
Two dollars is fine.
What do you feel?
I'd be two fifty, but.
I'll go two, I'll say two fifty, that way it's above it.
Okay, two fifty.
What do you think?
I'm at two dollars.
Two fifty would be.
And what do you feel about clerk? Do you want to go four dollars, three dollars, two dollars, what, what was cost of living for?
Well, I feel that, and sorry, but I do feel that clerk and the treasurer are a little more valued than the bartenders, I mean, not saying that they don't do their job, but I believe that Wendy's years of service should also taken into consideration some for.
Oh, absolutely, the loyalty.
Wendy is one of the best.
And she went years just getting fifty cent.
Nobody in this community is more important than anyone else in this community, and we make that very clear. And the job everyone in this community does is just as important as anyone here.
But we have to have somebody here doing the job.
Yeah, we gotta have somebody that's been here to know what to do.
Cost of living for Wendy was what, how much extra for Wendy?
About a dollar, dollar eating, I mean, so probably two bucks, or somewhere around there for her to.
It's gotta be at least.
I'm gonna say three, that's my personal opinion. Three or even four, because of the loyalty and the years. I think four.
I say four because of the years of service.
All right.
Them girls, them girls that had a lot of hard hours, and.
There's no doubt, we're not saying that, okay, so get your supervisor. Okay, so maintenance supervisor? You guys want the five?
That would put in the budget. This money could put in the budget.
But let's talk about the segregation at that point. We didn't talk about it, which we're doing.
Which I, I was told to get on agenda to talk about it. And here we are saying it's already there.
No, we're talking about it right now.
I'm concerned with that.
So what do you guys feel? Uh, he suggested five dollars. Cost of living for Justin was just under two dollars.
Actually, two dollars and ten cents.
Two dollars and ten cents.
They earn every dime of it.
So does everyone in this community, most of them.
What do you feel?
Well, I mean, I feel that he's now a supervisor and he has four licenses.
Yeah.
And he has two more to go.
He's also on call all the time.
I, I feel like he deserves the five dollars fully just because I thought he was getting more for each license. I, I feel like he deserved more for each license. I think what you put in for that is definitely appreciated from, from the city. So I'm, I'm good with five. And what about maintenance? Do you want him to go a dollar or do you want him to go more?
How long has he been here?
Ten months. And he's currently at twenty dollars.
How many licenses does he hold? How many licenses do you...
Just one, I'm working on my water one right now.
And he has a C D O.
And I have two dollars.
So, two, I mean, two.
And what was his cost of living, Bonnie?
Dollar ninety-four.
So I think, I mean, we wanna do that to everybody else. We need to bump him up two dollars to get him to at least the cost of living. And that's what you were saying earlier. So I just propose two dollars for Ryan.
Is he still in there? I mean, there's no probationary period or we're not paying you any licenses or anything?
Um, he's not, I'm in probationary period anymore. And I will say to his and my credit vote that we've been accident free for almost years. So we're trying to maintain a low cost to the city as far as that kind of situation, so... So my skills are good, is what I'm saying. You can drive a tractor and a backhoe and that kind of thing.
So two dollars?
I'm in, I'm in the cold.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we raise the treasurer pay two dollars and fifty cents, the clerk four dollars, maintenance supervisor five dollars, and maintenance two dollars.
What else I can, uh, call in favor? Passes.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Okay, let's go down here to the... Approve the resolution.
We need to do number six.
Put that...
Number six.
Number six.
Number six. Oh, yes, I, no, okay. The mirror point, uh, send Cynthia and Justin to the Z K Planning and zoning commission. I, I appoint them.
Does anybody else, like, there's, there's nobody else interested in getting on that, right?
Anyone else on city council or wants to be on it, that's fine.
No, no, I'm just...
You're great.
Yeah, you're good. No, we're just making sure.
Is there anyone else wanting to be on this?
Oh, you just gotta raise Justin, you're speaking.
No, I, I really like being on planning zoning. Actually, it takes a long time to learn. I mean, it takes a long time to really know what's going on, so, you know, I find doing it, yeah.
Is Cynthia here?
No, no.
So we need a motion, right?
No.
Yeah.
So we can move on?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go down here to seven. Council consider approving resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh-two fees and rate resolution. And that's...
You want smaller?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna...
The changes that I made are what they were before. It was a five percent increase for water and wastewater, excuse me, garbage. And then the four dollar fifty cent increase to wastewater.
Which is what we talked about last month, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
And just to clarify, I think you said this last month. We have not necessarily raised it at five percent every year, right? It's been three percent sometimes.
Correct.
Yeah, it's usually a three percent raise.
There's been some years that, like with the garbage, we've absorbed it, have a raise to it all.
Yeah, yeah. But this year, it... There will be other different...
I make a motion that we approve resolution two zero two three dash zero two.
I'll second.
Um, favor. Passes.
Well, just a quick comment.
This is hopefully, I was saying about that.
Okay, um, remember it's gonna be divined out more. Um, so it's gonna go into, their, their wages are gonna be sanitation to along with ours. So it will be more spread across all the funds. Because we have different funds, we have the generate water, the sewer and wastewater. So normally they are just, um, three of them, which is the streets and the water and the sewer. So we're gonna add that sanitation. So it will be spread out more. So it shouldn't affect the budget as tough in that area. And it shouldn't break us down so that our, we're in the black, right, in the future, so...
What do you think?
I think we're on to number eight.
Okay. Through the adoption of, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh-three.
I move to suspend the rules of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh-three. Read by title, calling.
I second.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I think you said...
I second, I second it.
Call in favor. Passes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh-three and ordinance entitled the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-three. Appropriating the sum of twelve million five hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars to the charge of expense and liabilities of the city of Julietta for said fiscal year. Operating levy of sufficient tax upon the taxable property and specifying the objects and purposes for which said appropriation is made.
So with the changes that we made to the wages, does this have to be...
As it stands.
As it stands. So that money will just go to a, I already said this before, by capital outlay or something?
No, uh, we have made adjustments to the, um, salaries for general water, sewer, streets, and sanitation, and I added those accounts. So we made the adjustment in case you said yes, um, prior, you know. So plus I'm not getting the full four that we did.
Right, that's what I made it so, does that money just stay in those funds?
Yes, so in other words, it, it, it just, it will make it so that we don't go over budget. So, um, 'cause we estimated the disbursement of payroll into those four funds. So it should, and we created the budget around that. So it should be just fine.
I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh-three. Apply fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriations ordinance.
I second it.
That's a roll call, vote. That's a roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Passes. Justin.
Thank you for considering the raises on behalf of the staff. I feel very supported by our town, by our council. Thank you. Um, the surplus was the main thing that I wanted to talk about tonight at the downtown agenda. And we're, the Blackberry Festival's over, the sprinklers are back around the park, and I think everything is going smoothly for the moment. So we have one major project, Charles Burke's pipe that we ordered two months ago that is still not here. We checked on it, uh, two weeks ago on our premises. We ordered eighty feet of coagure for that over here, which we talked about before. Um, and then we have the crosswalk to paint. And as far as I know, I don't see anyone else has anything major. And I think that's our only major projects at the moment.
And the coagure didn't come yet.
It has not come in. I, they had to order from Tri-City. So we drove in there and asked why it wasn't here. And, oh, let me check on it, we'll get on it, and then we haven't heard anything. I don't know what's going on.
Congratulations to the Blackberry Festival. It was a massive success, great job to the, to the committee. And huge, just a, just a wonderful thing for our town. Puts us on the map and all you hear is great positive things, so... Well, and to Ed Roskow, who's not here, car show was amazing.
It was a good car show.
And the Doxy races.
Lot more cars this year.
Doxy racing.
Yeah, a lot of cars this year.
So just, what a, just amazing success.
We've got a lot of feedback, so I'll talk to you.
Kind of backdrop, sorry. Um, we had the motorcycle rally came, come through and there wasn't a lot of stuff for Julietta, but they stayed at the park, so I don't know if...
They stayed in our park?
Yeah, they stayed, they stayed down there at our park.
They did.
Huh? They did? But there wasn't any businesses around here that were involved with it or what happened? Did anything happen?
I know what happened.
You guys know what happened?
We're talking about the bikers against child abuse.
Yeah, whatever that was.
Yeah, so I was approached about pulling a venue for them. And my venue wasn't big enough, so we worked with the hardware and we put on, I mean, it turned out amazing. They, they wanted to involve Julietta, so they got involved in the park. I'm not sure why any particular businesses were involved, but, um, you know, basically they wanted a singular venue for most of their things. They did awards, they did, had a concert and everything. But it wasn't like a traditional bike run where you go from bar to bar or whatever.
I was just approached by a member that kind of brought it up and I didn't know anything really about it. I noticed when I was in Kendrick for an ambulance call that I saw the bikers over there and they came over here and didn't see anything. And then I found out that they stayed down there. So I wanted to find out if anybody knew anything, 'cause I knew they rented a car from you guys. So I didn't know if there was anything that was supposed to go on, so...
Oh, yeah, no, and they, they paid a lot of money to use the venues that they used. And they had, everything was very regimented. So it'd be the equivalent to like a, a major wedding or a corporate event.
Did they have to, did they pay to stay in the park then?
No, the park was free.
The park was free?
Yes.
We don't have a charge for the gazebo or the park, so...
All right, man.
I don't think any, I don't think all businesses in Julietta were completely left out. I do think there was some, they did stop at the bottoms up, I'm pretty sure.
I was told no.
Well, you'll vote in favor.
Yeah. Well, they were, you guys were close, weren't you, Mike? You guys were gone. But you didn't know ahead of time. So you wouldn't have had a chance to have been up in the court.
Did you have a nice time?
City council, again.
Nope, nothing.
We did all right at the Blackberries.
Closer?
No, we didn't. Ran out of hamburgers.
Yay!
We didn't run out of hamburgers.
You had five left, right?
I had five left.
Yeah.
But I had forty hot dogs. I still have forty hot dogs.
I should have liked dinner.
I should have.
You got lunch for a month now.
I should have gotten barbecue and fired it up in here and we all...
I move to go to executive session, present file of code seven four eight, please.
I second.